I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, welcome. Any visitors or public comments in? Yes ma'am. Kindly take the podium or this, whichever is comfortable on.
Cindy Wood, Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewers. We just recently had them come out and mark our property. My interest is looking, they gave us the 10 steps to hooking into the new sewers and I was quite surprised to see that the township is charging us 89.50 for a permit fee when we were told back in 2017 that the township was going to do everything they could to minimize the costs.
I don't know if you answered that, what the problem is there?
I don't think we've ever directed the code not to from a formal action by the board to waive all those fees, so I guess the code has been charging, and that was on the list that we shared with the committee that would be, you need a connection, you need a permit for a plumber.
I get that, but I remember-
Whether or not it would be waived, that was something that would, had to yet be determined at the time, so this would, if the board feels they want to waive that fee from here on, we can reimburse and we can let people know there won't be-
It's the first time I'm hearing about it.
Yeah, I mean it was discussed at the time-
Thought these were private costs.
They are private costs, yes. You're right.
I guess my question being is, I remember them asking if we could get, if we hooked in in a certain amount of time, but you couldn't work with Bucks County Water and Sewer, understandable, it's their fee, that was a larger fee, and we were kind of given the impression that we would be able to not, you know, pay any additional fees, I guess basically to the township for the hookup. I mean, it's just-
Can we, can we spend some time looking into this and getting some feedback from our code department-
Sure.
-seeing what this was going to cost, and then we'll, and then we'll bring it up at our next meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood.
Thank you.
We'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other comments from any, seeing none. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, December 3rd at 5:00. We're going to be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th for Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Doylestown Township Leaf and Yard Recycling is 9 to 11 every, every third Saturday of each month from March through December, and the entrance to the recycling bit, pit is the New Britton Road access to Central Park. Gift giving ideas, now there's a number of things that we can do and be very creative with our gift giving and still help the township grow. Movie tickets, park and recreation gift certificates. There are various programs that we offer that you can give a gift certificate for. Say you have a daughter who has children and you want them to enjoy some like Taekwondo thing and something, you can give a gift certificate for your daughter to take her kids there, and you know, think creatively. We have park benches where you can name somebody. Mural prints, we have the dog around Doylestown posters, we have bricks at Kids Castle and bricks at the service memorial, and we have lots of, lots of township commemorative Mercer tiles left over from the bicentennial in 2018. Okay, so that's, that's my commercial for Doylestown Township, all things wonderful for Christmas and other gift giving times in this holiday season. Minutes approval for the regular meeting is the next thing on our agenda, the regular meeting of October 15th, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Snyder, for handling that meeting so well in my absence, I really appreciate it, and I've read the minutes and everything looks in order. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second? Is there a second?
A second.
Any corrections or revisions? All in favor of the minutes for October 15th, say aye.
Aye.
One abstention, that would be-
I don't, I was only-
You were on, you were on my phone.
Yeah, so I checked the minutes just relative to when I was on, I don't know how to-
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so-
It's okay.
Okay, so I-
Portion of time you were on the phone-
Okay.
-and you voted yes. Thank you for that clarification, noted in the minutes. Who's doing the minutes? Do you do it in the minutes? Welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is the budget work session notes approval for October 15th, 2019. Everyone receive those minute notes, is there a motion to approve the minute notes for October 2015?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye, one abstention?
Two abstentions.
Oh, two abstentions, okay. Then the next is the minute notes from October 29th, 2019. I have a question before we move on to, on the second page under expenses. The first line reads, "The budget includes an increase of 3% for non-uniform employees." Is that accurate?
Yes, it's built into the budget as 3%.
Is it 3% across the board or is it up to 3%, which is how it usually is?
It's 3.4%.
So it's up to 3%? Okay. And I would move that that record, or the minutes reflect that, that it is not a 3% increase, it's an up to 3% increase for across the non-uniform. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I don't care if everybody gets 3%, but that's not the intent-
Right.
-of the approved budget. Okay. So I would make that amendment, with that amendment, is there anything else?
I have, I have one other comment about that. One of the other things we talked about on 1029 is, we were talking, we didn't spend time on it, this was about the extra payment or pension, and we said we were putting in 125, we agreed, but what we said after that was, based on how favorable we were throughout the year, we would try to take some of that favorability and apply it to the balance of the 300.
Right.
So I would like that to happen.
Okay, did you get that? All right, there are two amendments in the minutes. You not hearing me? Speak louder, closer to the microphone. See how I can understand your pantomime?
And not you.
I haven't said anything, you can't be pointing at me.
Move it up.
Okay, there's two corrections in the minutes, is there anything else? I move for the approval of the minutes with those two corrections for August 29th, minute meeting, minutes notes, whatever they are for that budget session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Thank you. And Ryan?
You're not, abstain.
Sorry. Okay. All right, reports from the solicitor.
I have comments later in the agenda, but not at this point, Madam Chairperson.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Township Engineer.
Nothing to report, thanks.
Thank you. Director of Operations.
Yes, just wanted to report to you that we are going to basically approve a contract to Mar Allen Concrete Products for the repair of the Edison Road Bridge debutment, this was on our structures report. The three bids were received, one, the lowest bid was for $4,975. Bi-State Construction was the second low bid at $6,150, and Minichi Construction was Because it's below the bid limits, we don't need board's approval, but it was part of the structure report from Penone Associates when they did their investigations, and we're going to move forward with that, it's just for informational purposes, so I just want to let you know that that's going to move forward as soon as we execute the agreement and get the documents in order.
Okay, thank you. Anything else at this time?
Yes, basically, I, 2019, 2020 snow removal bid with, actually, 2020, 2019, 2020 rental snow removal equipment with operator, we advertised for, for the, that, that contract on Tuesday, November 6th, we received four responses from contractors, we've worked with all these contractors in previous years, so I'm asking the board to approve all four of them, I'm just going to read them off and then the amounts of hourly rates that they will be charging us. So Little Diggers Excavating and Hardscape submitted for one vehicle for an hourly rate of $120. James and, James and Family Enterprises LLC submitted for three vehicles for the amount of $120 per hour. B&amp;E Carts LLC submitted for four vehicles at $122.50 per hour, and Spear Excavating LLC submitted for two vehicles at $125 per hour. I'm recommending that we approve to, or to have all these contractors work with Mr. Garrett in the snow removal portion for, for this upcoming season, 2019, 2020, and I'm asking for the board's approval for all four contractors.
Make a motion to approve all four of the snow removal from Dave Tomko, November 15th, letter.
Second? I don't think he heard you. Your face was-
Didn't hear me? Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Aye.
Can you repeat it?
I make a motion to approve Dave Tomko's letter of November 15th for the four companies for the snow removal.
I'll second the motion. Calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, Dave, you're on still.
One more item, again, this is the, this is base paving and road repair in the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge neighborhood, as we've had progress in the installation of the sewers as well as our public works department has had progress in replacing the storm pipe, we've had more roads, more lineal footage of roads completed. I submitted a proposal, a recommendation you and in my memorandum in the packet, that we basically would cost share in the repair of the roads and milling and base paving for the remainder of Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Road, basically from Pebble Ridge Road to Sandy Brook, Shady Brook Drive. Pebble Ridge Road, at the intersection of Pebble Ridge and Pebble Ridge Road and Pebble Ridge Road, there's a 100-foot section that wasn't part of the sewer project, and then there's another short section of Pebble Ridge Road from Turk Road, about 415 feet in, so there's three separate sections. The total cost for that is $210, $210,753.75. The cost sharing township portion will be $141,583.80. This is just a, a need of the board's acknowledgement that we're going to reimburse Bucks County Water and Sewer for this paving that will be done by A.H. Cornell and Son Incorporated.
I'm going to venue-
So this, this work is just pulled up from next year?
Correct.
This is additional, it's, it was planned for next year.
Correct, it was planned for next year, we're just advancing the work because the work is done.
Yeah, this is a good thing.
Yeah, and that's a good thing, because we're basically breaking up more, as the work gets completed, we're breaking it up a little bit more, so we can actually advance this quicker.
I believe you may have misspoke, but the, the number is 141,538,080.
Yes. Correct, thank you, sorry about that, yes, too many numbers.
Make sure the minutes accurately reflect the correct amount. All right, is there a motion to that fact?
Motion to approve the base paving for Pebble Ridge, Woodridge request.
I'll second that and thank, you know, Dave for a lot of work, get, put this thing together, save us some money and aggregation, so, good job.
All right, thank you. With thanks to Mr. Tomko, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything else, Dave?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything from the manager?
Yes, just want to report on last evening's public meeting that DEP held at Lenape Middle School, Mr. Snyder, myself, Mr. Hawes, Joe Van Houten were at the meeting, there was a nice article in today's Intelligencer, I think everyone on the board, I've also provided you a copy of that article as well as the PowerPoint that was presented by DEP last evening. The end result of all the information, just so the board knows, is that we have eight homes in the township that exceed the health advisory limit of 70 parts per trillion, there's approximately 20 homes above the 40 parts per trillion, but 70 is the, the number everybody's focused on right now, and in order to assist those homeowners, the DEP will be putting in whole house filtration systems in those homes, they are continuing to monitor and look for a source and awaiting whether or not DEP will change any of the MCL requirements and move this from an uncategorized compound that they're looking at as more of a actual contaminant with limits and everything on the MCL. There's a lot of information on how the groundwater moves in the area and the creeks and other information that they've obtained as they've done their research. Again, they're still looking for a specific source, but that is how they're going to address the affected properties at this time, so I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that. DEP has a great website with all this information on it and would certainly encourage people to go to the website. They are still taking public comment, after the presentation, they went off the record and they took questions and answers, and then they went back on the record and took specific public comment related to this particular project. One of the things they did indicate that this is an interim final report, they still have to do a final, final report, again, hoping that either the state or the EPA will come up with some other standards that will have to be met, but public comment is being accepted by DEP through January 17th.
All right, thanks Stephanie. Anyone have any questions about Stephanie's report? And you were there, do you want-
I just thought that they did an excellent job reviewing all that material last night. I think they were very receptive, all the questions, they were very thorough, they went back from ground zero to today, so they did, I thought, a really, really good job.
Anybody else? All right, moving on to supervisors' comments. Dan, you're on there for 10, 10 days for trees.
Oh, 10 days for trees, so, the EAC has been doing a lot of work lately, it's not only been the 10 days for trees, but for other, other types of projects that they're working on, so I'll start with the 10 days of trees. The EAC is looking to celebrate planting trees this year, they're going to have 10 days, they're proposing that they're going to do 10 days of celebrations, and that's going to encompass a lot of different types of events, including the bookstore, including a planting of trees, including trying to get public, public participation in planting trees. We found out that planting trees is one of the best things that we can do for the environment to stop global climate change, and, so that EAC is very dedicated to that, and we have tons of partners that are involved, and they just wanted to make sure that the Board of Supervisors were aware of their plans for, for this. It will, it will culminate 10 days before a day and end on a day with a, with a planting.
So it's fans booth, Earth Day and a Arbor Day, that's very cool, it's going to be, and I'm going to take a stab at writing a poem.
Are you? Yeah, there's going to be a-
About a tree.
Poetry reading, yeah, yeah.
All about a tree.
Yeah.
Okay, so thanks, Jenny, anything else about the EAC?
Question?
Yep.
How was Pool's Corner decided as the area, are you going to do the planning?
Well, I think Pool's Corner was already one of the areas that they were considering planting, I'm not entirely sure what the, what the purpose of Pool's Corner being that, that focus, but it was a, it was a joint, it was a joint decision between the borough, I think, the borough and the township, so.
Yeah.
The Doylestown Borough actually approached us about doing a joint planting in an area they felt would be beneficial to both communities.
Are they going to participate in this 10 days?
They are, they are, there's going to be a lot of different, there are going to be a lot of different events, including things in the township and in the borough.
So are all these groups that are listed here, are they all going to contribute something?
They're all, they're all part of the plan, they're all part of the plan, yeah, yeah, it should be a pretty exciting event, and I think they were itching after having our, our bicentennial to jump into something, something big again, so, I'm very excited about the EAC. They're also working on, as many of you know, there was a questionnaire that was sent out by Doylestown Borough not that long ago related to single-use plastics, and it was a very successful survey in that there was a great response from them, and the EAC would like to, to do a similar type of survey, knowing that the demographics of the township and the needs and the wants of the township are much different than the borough, they would like to get the finger on, their finger on the pulse of the township, so they're, they're looking to do another survey. Right now, with single-use plastics, there's currently a moratorium on local governments doing anything as far as banning them or restricting them or charging for plastic bags.
We can't, just to clarify, we, we can't do anything regarding that?
We can't.
Is that just in the state of Pennsylvania?
It's just the state of Pennsylvania, they, they put a moratorium on it until they investigated the costs associated with that, related to the small businesses that would be impacted, and, and that moratorium is supposed to end in July 2020, so the EAC is interested in getting some more information in anticipation of the lifting of the moratorium.
Just as a follow-up, this came up at the executive meeting of the Pecato the other day, or last week, and the anticipating that lifting of a moratorium, they're starting to, you know, investigate potential legislation that, that local governments can possibly adopt, that would be compatible throughout the, at least county of Bucks.
Because I know they, they actually implemented this in Avalon, New Jersey, last year, all single-use plastics, and, I mean, th- those are three-month businesses that thrive on, you know, a tourist over those, the course of the three months, and, you know, there were definitely some businesses that complained and felt affected, but I think the overall genesis of it was positive, and, and you could see people, you know, knowing when they were going out, that they were grabbing their reusable bags, you know, it makes everybody kind of think a little bit more around that, so.
I would suggest one way that the EAC can contribute is, you know, gathering the most palatable of, of legislation that we might be able to consider after this, you know, this moratorium is lifted.
Well, the EAC has already been in touch with several other EACs in the region and looked at their ordinances to, to see what they've put in place and what, what they are anticip, or anticipating putting in place in the future, so they have a little bit of a jump on that, and I'm sure Pecato hopefully eventually will have some, some legislation.
Oh yeah, absolutely, no doubt about it.
Right, right.
Any else?
Yes, so we had a joint meeting between Ways and Means and the Parks and Recs Midis today to discuss the proposed new facility, and they're working on building a plan for us to review in the future, there's still some more work to do, but I wanted to let you know that that was put together today. Supervisor Snyder was there as well, if you want to add a comment to the meeting.
There was, there was a lot of discussion, I think a lot of progress, they still have some ways to go, but yeah, we'll, they'll pull it together.
Right. But the last Parks and Rec meeting, prior to that, was just the, the single Parks and Rec meeting, there was some discussion about looking at the different facilities that we have, the different parks, the different services that we offer, and, including the discussion of putting public bathrooms by Kids Castle, which is one of the things that I so desperately would love to see down by Kids Castle, and the use of some of the funding that we have to do that. Now, there is concerns about our bandwidth in the township and of course budgeting with that, but I would be, I'm excited to see when they bring it before the board, see what the opinion of the rest of the members of the board are on, on that.
I don't understand what you just said.
Okay.
And with on what?
As far as being able to, to actually put the bathrooms in by Kids Castle, as capacity of people, yeah.
In conjunction or now, or in conjunction with the superstructure of a, of a facility? Now?
Right, and it's separate from some, separate from the recreation facility.
Yeah, okay. And I think that's it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And you have anything?
No.
Okay. Ryan?
Actually, I, everything I have is on the agenda, so I'm clean.
All right, good, we're moving on then.
Yeah, amazing.
Correspondence, Go Light Green, we weren't selected, moving on.
Mike, can I make a request real quick about that, please?
Go ahead.
It'll just, it'll take 30 seconds, and I apologize for not having the agenda, we weren't selected for that grant, but the grant period is open back up for the Greenlight Grow, and that was in conjunction with all of our neighbors, was Plumstead, Doylestown Borough, Buckingham, New Britton Township as well as part of that, and it was a whole big project, so I'd like that, that the board know we would like to reapply for that, okay, which means it would be a commitment for engineering dollars, it's an 80/20 match, the 20% will be split up between the municipalities and the cost sharing, I can outline the costs of what that would be, once we, you know, reevaluate the project, but I'd like to ask that we would re, approval for reapplying for that grant.
You go ahead.
Okay.
So if you, when you reapply, when you reapply, is that period, would they notify you again in October, November next year, that you'd get it or don't get it, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next year we'll get it. And anything else? Let's see, Hammerstein Museum requests for a refund in fees. Everyone got this request from, I guess Keith Benimore is writing on behalf of the Education Center, so, thoughts? I think this is contrary to our policy in many ways.
No, I, I think we have a $1,000 limit.
You do, yes. But we also don't refund.
I mean?
Request has to be made before payment is due, I would think, we can't, this, we've already gotten this, they want a refund.
Of the whole 3,000?
Want a refund of a whole 3,000, and we don't usually refund any, you know, like a thousand dollars, we would have to refund a thousand dollars.
And I would suggest that you, I think other nonprofits have submitted land development applications, and I don't think you've waived, and I'm not going to stake my life on it, but I don't think you've ever waived application fees for land development plans.
I recall.
Check with the, with the Wise application and whatever else, but you know, I, I may be, I may be incorrect, but I don't think so.
I don't think he is either. And they were on a specific deadline per the stipulation, so they had to, in order to have the application processed, I, you know, they had to make a decision on whether to submit it and meet the requirements of the stip and the deadline, or, you know, ask the question after the fact, so.
So I don't think we need to pass on this.
Yes.
Not going to pass on it. Rick, you, are you aware of the meeting on Monday regarding the Hammerstein?
It's on the agenda for the planning commission.
On the agenda for the planning commission? Do you know what it's, what it's about?
No.
Do you, Stephanie?
Yes.
Can you give us a brief?
This is the land development application for the Oscar Hammerstein property for the proposed museum, this was a matter that went to the zoning hearing board, was denied by the zoning hearing board and-
Fast forward, what's on the agenda for Monday?
Is the land development plan, the process is part of the requirement to go through the land development process.
It is, it's within what's been permitted.
Yes, absolutely, nothing else has been submitted with it, it's just straight museum and parking and everything related.
Okay, great, thanks. That's all I needed to know, right? It's within the format of what has been approved, that's all. Okay, that tells us that, you know, residents who had an issue with the property before that, you know, there's nothing alarming or nothing new that's going to happen Monday or be presented Monday. Thank you. All right, next item, discussion of the private well testing ordinance. Interesting, interesting discussion. I have a preliminary question, maybe this is of all of us, what is our, what is our ability to regulate this?
Currently, there is no regulation for private wells.
I know, but what is our authority to require the, that private wells be tested?
There's a provision of the second-class township code that permits you, unless you're preempted, to adopt ordinances and regulations for the welfare of the community.
We're not preempted in any way with the-
To my knowledge, you're not preempted by any state law with respect to private wells.
Okay, then go ahead, we're good.
So, the idea came with the proliferation of environmental contaminants that we've had in the groundwater supply in the township, probably in the last 10 to 15 years, exasperated by PFAS. So, it was initially a discussion to possibly have homeowners that only had, that fronted a public water main to test their well, and if there was some contamination, then the homeowner could beneficially connect to public water. At the last meeting, we- At the last meeting, we briefly discussed expanding the idea and the notion to testing to township-wide. So somebody that does not have public water or is not near public water, do we want to require homeowners to test their public water either at the time of sale, or possibly, like we have for the septic management plan that requires, I believe it's on a three-year cycle? So, those were just some ideas that we, we floated for discussion. It's, it's cutting-edge, it, it has not been done before, to my knowledge, in Pennsylvania. The DEP, we went to the meeting last night, the DEP recommended that private well homeowners test their wells every three to five years. So, it's something that we could use as a basis if we decided to move forward. It's, 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 I, I completely get it, it's a little, it's, it's, it's a little different idea.
How many wells are we talking about, Keith, do you know?
Well, what do we have, 5,000 homes in the, in the township, roughly? And about half, I'd say, are connected to public water, so 2,500 homes? Would, would be impacted.
And it costs, did I read your memo correctly, it's like $600 a test?
That, that, that's preliminarily what we have found, we've spoken to a couple labs and put together a preliminary, very preliminary, testing parameters that we would be looking at, that are in front of you. And we've had one lab get back to us and say the cost would be about $600, so.
And the frequency for safety purposes, is it, is three years a minimum, or an average, or what would you think?
I, the DEP is, recommends three to five, EPA, I believe, is every one to two years. So, it varies, but I, I would say, yeah, three, three years is probably a reliable timeframe to catch something. Now, you can say, well, the, the public water, you know, we test for our water daily, and we may be able to pick something up, like we did in Cross Keys, a lot quicker than a, a homeowner may be able to do. That, that's a valid argument as well, that, that.
Aren't there a couple different, so, this test, is it, it's a standard test, but is there, there was a, there was a, I know a couple in the township that just purchased a home with a well, that hadn't been tested, and the homeowner was very upfront to say that the well had not been tested since they had moved in, which was 10-plus years ago. They did, they paid roughly around $500 or $600 for a test. They did have to go back and get secondary testing after that first test. And, I mean, it led to some major issues within the system. But it was a two, it became a two-step process when the, when the first test determined that there was something going on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not 100% what's going on in that case, that is certainly possible. These tests, you, you, you can test initially, and then whether you're required to put some home treatment on, and you want to make sure that the treatment works, then yes, you would do a second round of testing. I heard a story, a gentleman called me up a few weeks ago, and he bought a house within the township, and he said, can I connect to public water? And we went over it, and I said, no, I said, we unfortunately don't have any public water close by. He said, well, I just bought a house, I didn't get the well tested, and I can't drink the water, I can't move into the house. And it's some, you know, if, if we did have some sort of requirement like that, that, that may alleviate some of those potential, yeah, problems.
And just one point, we mentioned about Pennsylvania in Barbara's question, but states like New Jersey and Michigan, they, they've said, we're going to regulate this because this is serious stuff. Pennsylvania's taking the approach, well, let each township and municipality handle it, we're not going to get involved in it, and that's, that's the reason there's this disconnect with some states.
That, that's correct. New Jersey has a whole depository of well information. I believe theirs is set up where homeowners have to test the well at the time of sale, and then they report it ultimately to the state, and that goes into a big map where you can look at the data and you can see, well, I'll buy this house, you know, it's, the water's high in nitrates, or, or, you know, it's just so you can make an informed decision.
Well, in a couple ways of, I see the point, I hate being Big Brother.
I agree.
And handed in requiring our homeowners who have private wells, mandating that they test. I, I hate that idea. I know that when you're selling property, most often than not, homeowners, potential buyers will get a, will insist on a well test, especially if there's, that's the usual, usual course of business. One thing we can do besides a notice to all homeowners, that they should have their wells tested every three years and give them who they should go to, and maybe we can get a discount for all of our residents if they choose one particular site, and we can maybe negotiate that. But I think we should, at the very least, notice to our, all our homeowners, but also put notice, put the Bucks County Realtor Association on notice that we have contaminations in private wells in Bucks County, and in particular, we have potential in Doylestown Township. So if you're selling a home in this area, you have a duty to disclose that.
Okay.
So that requires everybody then to be on notice and to get their wells tested at the time of sale. Then we can, then they have, then we, we publish the options that they have. If we can do the same thing with this kind of approach, rather than.
Right, without regulating.
Doing a mandated approach, I think that would be more palatable than, I would feel more comfortable with it.
So more of an education campaign?
Well, yeah, more, but, but like, this is an alarming, hello, be alarmed, this is, and here's, here's what you need to do, and here's where you can go to get it done. And, and, but especially the people who are selling our homes.
Yeah, I think that's.
They need to know, and they need to, they need to divulge that.
Because I, I think there were, I know that, I know of a few different circumstances in the Pebble Ridge area where, where the Realtors did not disclose even what was happening.
With the sewer project.
With the sewer project. Like, like, as everything was happening and unfolding, and so.
We may not be able to get them on the seller disclosure forms, you know, you have to disclose right on, you have to disclose mold, blah, blah, blah. We may not be able to disclose, you have to disclose any, but you, you, if you tell the Realtors, you've got to tell them. And then the Realtors don't, and we have it written down somewhere, like in all of our publications, you have Realtors, you should tell people, and they don't, then the Realtors are going to be on the hook.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, I agree, and you know, my position, I, I think if we don't make it, I think it's part of our responsibility as a municipality to enforce this and have some teeth in it, and that's what the ordinance is. As Ryan even said, I mean, the Realtors know this stuff, they just don't want to get involved in sewers, and I don't like Big Brother either, believe me, I'm, I'm even more of an advocate, but I think there's some point where we as a township have to look out for the health and safety of our residents, and, I mean, even today, we're hearing about people who are selling homes without order testing, and to, to hope that educating the homeowners and the Realtors will solve this problem, I think is naive on, on our township's part.
Well, and I'm not, I, I would not be, I'm not adverse to a mandate, a mandated provision. I'm really not. I just think if there's a lesser way of doing it, initially I would, I would opt for that. I don't think we have done a major campaign on this, and I know we haven't noticed all the Realtors that, that sell houses in this area. I know we haven't done that. But if we were to do something, I would like to have it like an addendum to what we already do with, with a septic management system, you know, have it as part of that process, you know? You may not need, you may not have septic, but if you've got a private well, you have to test every three years, three years. We do that, we have, we've done that with management, septic management. It's an easy add-on, I think, and I think it's something that the residents would understand is necessary. So, I'm, I can go either way, but I think in a minimum, we should notice and educate.
Yeah, I, I think we can work on, at least in the beginning, some sort of educational outreach.
And I think doing it at the point of sale is not onerous. To, to broaden it, I, I think is now getting into this overbearing portion, and I'm going to, I'm going to stop talking because I've been talking about it for six or eight months now, so you know my position. I, I just wanted to do a first step at the sale of a home, to get an ordinance in so that we can do that oversight, if you will, and I'll leave it up to the rest of the board to give their opinions.
How do we, I'm sorry, I interrupted. How do we mandate that the sale of a home? I mean, just passing an ordinance?
Same way you mandate the registration of deeds here, you have the authority to do that.
You mean, I mean, what, what's, what's the vehicle for doing that?
An ordinance.
Okay.
We would have exemptions, for instance, if you're transferring it to your child or something, but we'll have to think about those things further, but perhaps if you want to make it a transfer.
Yeah. Sorry.
The only thing I was going to ask was more about, once you put this in place, how do you monitor and ensure people follow?
Which, which the sale of the house, or?
Well, starting there, the sale of the house, or if we took it a step further, it's every three years, and you have to, and you find something, and you made it mandatory, well, nothing else makes it today, go back and.
Well, the septic management.
Let me, let me say two things. One, at time of sale, they can't record a deed, you record a deeds office, without your stamp on it that it's been registered here. So if the ordinance says you will not accept and stamp a deed, then they won't be able to transfer the property. Now, as to the, if you choose to go forward with testing on the cycle that you've done, just like the sewage management plan, we have filed numerous citations with the district judge, then people wind up complying and we don't proceed further. But you do have teeth by way of not registering the deed or filing a citation with the district justice.
Well said. Any, any other comments about this?
Just one other, one other question.
Yeah.
DTMA wells, what's your frequency of testing for this list?
It, it depends. Bacteria, we test monthly, nitrates, solids, pH, pH we test daily, VOCs we test yearly, PFAS yearly, lead's yearly, and iron and manganese, I believe, is every couple months. So, it, it kind of varies, but.
So every DTMA well is tested at least on an annual basis for?
Yes.
Majority of this stuff?
Yes, yes, yes. These are, there's, DEP requires us not to get in the weeds, but there's SOCs, those are tested every five years, those are very expensive to test. I don't think it's worthwhile for residents to test that. We rarely, if ever, have found that in our system, but these are all contaminants that are at least tested yearly.
Because you're doing those yearly tests, hopefully, if they're spread out around the township.
Yes.
Maybe it'll pop up again first, like it did in Cross Keys, before residents get impacted.
Yep, absolutely.
I think what Keith is looking for us today is to authorize our solicitor to do a draft ordinance that at the sale of a home, this testing has to be done. And, and I think that's what he's trying to walk away from, or, not to walk away from, but trying to, trying to take, take out of this.
Trying to go lately.
I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm okay with that, as long as it doesn't say, if you're near a, a water line, you have to hook up.
Well, because I, I think we had a conversation, Keith and Stephanie and I, and, you know, to compel somebody to connect to public water and all the costs, just because you don't want to treat for E. coli, which is a common thing occurs, you know, the old days you poured a bottle of chlorine down it and it was fine, so, you know, it's a lot for, for $1.50 to fix it, you don't want to spend, you know, eight grand to connect public water.
Correct, yes. Yeah, yeah, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't a DTMA, Big Brother, this is, I think, just more for big picture of the, the health and safety of Doylestown residents, that, you know, we, we just want to make sure they're, they're okay.
I'm with that.
So are we looking to have him draft an ordinance for the time of sale, or time of sale? Okay. I, I had a question about your listing of the.
Sure.
The tests that you had and the suggested corrections.
Mm-hmm.
For PFAS and VOCs, those were the only two that I can see right now that required a connection to public water, if you had public water.
Yeah, I, I think our, our, our thought was that, was that they require intense monitoring yearly, and we were a little worried that a particular homeowner, we've seen that in the past, where homeowners may not keep up with the maintenance of a filter that's required. So PFAS and VOCs are absorbed into, by carbon, so carbon only has a certain lifespan, and then you need to change out the carbon. So I think that, that was our thought process, that, but, you know, that can be discussed as well.
Okay, so we have one, we have one thing going. Do I need a motion?
Need a motion to authorize the preparation of the ordinance, which would require well testing at time of sale of the home, the appropriate enforcement provisions.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, any other, further discussion? All on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we publish it. I mean, we let people know we're doing this, and we encourage every private well owner to, to test and then give them where they can get the information to test.
Sure.
And what they should be testing for, and then what remedies, if they find something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll tighten that up in the resolution.
See if we can find, if we can find a company that would, you know, test for.
Give you a discount.
Yeah, a discount for numbers of the people who want to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith, very much. All right. Continue, so are we done? Okay, next item, budget, budget presentation. Everyone got their binder? We spent months on the, on this budget. Before you go into the details, I just have one question. I'm not sure, I don't, someone can clarify it, maybe even Ed can clarify it. Do we have funding in this budget to do anything with the REC Center in 2020? Like, start planning or engineering?
Or, or continuing?
No, I mean, and do actually spend money on engineering dollars?
Engineering dollars.
No.
I'm asking you, anybody?
Not specifically, right?
Since you want to hear me. $4 million in 2021, spent and borrowed, that's all we put in, and the debt service associated with that.
But if we, if we wanted to spend money in 2020 so that we're actually building in 2021, how can we make that happen?
It would be a reimbursement.
I think we, I'm sure we can study how that could be done. I'm, I'm not.
I don't see the point, this is, this is a simple structure, once we figure out what we want. I don't see the point in spending, you know, two years planning it, when we could spend 2020 planning it and building it in 21.
Right, I'm sure if we need to find some funds, we can find them.
Is everybody okay with that?
Because you're talking about a relatively minor expenditure.
Okay, as long, because I want to, I want to move this building along.
All we, all we put in was the placeholder for the big.
Borrow, yeah.
And if you're, I don't know whether you're going to borrow money to do it or not, but you can do a bond or loan anticipation resolution that you could pay back a general fund if you elect to do that.
Okay. Okay, just so you know where I stand on the REC Center.
We just found out where you stood.
Yeah, I'm shocked.
I was wondering where you stood on that. Thank you, okay, Stephanie, I interrupted.
Not at all, we're any, as you said, we've had six public meetings related to the 2020 budget and our forecasting through the next four or five years. Up on the screen for the board and for the residents at home and as well as our residents here, we have the various funds with our 2020 revenue, anticipating to be a total of net of the transfers, $13,657, $1,266. Our expenditures of $15,240,991, again, that is net of the transfers. You will see the middle column there shows that the 1.5 million we're using in the reserves and includes the net transfers of over $1,004,000. The next slide should be the millage rate, shows the various millage, where the funds, where the mills go to in the various funds, and we are increasing in the millage by 3/4 of a mill. You'll also see we're doing a lot of capital. of a mill. You'll also see we're doing a lot of capital in 2020, related to some of the computer items and other road and bridge items and things like that, that we're going to be working on in the coming year. And lastly, what we always like to see compared to the county and the school district, our portion of mills that we use to provide all the services to the community is much smaller than the other portions. And this provides our community with 24-hour police, emergency services, fire, ambulance, our recreation programming, facilities, public works, roads, bridges, maintenance, and administration and code enforcement, as well as all the capital programs that we have planned. And that.
That's pretty much it.
And then just, we have the detail, no, we have a lot of detail. The budget will be online tomorrow. It is a very detailed document that has been worked on with our Board of Supervisors, our Ways and Means Committee, and our finance staff, our Finance Director, Ken Wallace, and our Budget Analyst at Evanbach. And it's with everybody, all the department heads and their input, which is very much appreciated to provide you with the budget that we have worked on and presented this evening.
Okay, and scrutinized, ad nauseam by the Board of Supervisors. In a good way, ad nauseam, in a good way. I mean, really detailed, ad nauseam.
Is, is a question, Stephanie, is the whole book available, or just certain sections available for residents?
The entire book is, the entire book will be online as well, available here at the township building. The old phrase is, the budget will hang for 20 days.
I'm glad that is, because there's, in addition to all the work that you described, I would encourage all residents to read the pages up front, because the pages give you a good editorial or description of what happened in '19 and how it's going to go going forward in '20 and the next five years. And if you go through the book, you'll see the five-year plans as well, so you can, you'll be able to get out of it. This is just not, our focus is not only of next year, it is looking out five years. So it's very important for everybody to see, and the tax plan is in there for the next five years. So it's good information to know that we're working hard on this, so please review it and ask questions.
Thanks, Ken. All right, we'll entertain a motion to hang the budget for 2020.
I'll make that motion to hang the budget.
I'll second.
Any questions? Anybody have any comments? All right, all in favor of hanging the budget?
Aye.
Okay, we've got 5-0. Budget is hanging. If anybody wants to see my book, you can comment through my book. Okay, next item, Chief Logan and Lieutenant O'Connor's employment agreements have been reviewed and accepted by the township, by the Board of Supervisors, and today we're going to move to approve them, and they're available if anybody needs to see them. Is there a motion to approve both contracts at this point?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for waiting on that, Chief. Next item is the Eagle Scout proclamation on Owen Neal, a very talented young man. He's having, getting his eagle, very split, is it, it's getting his eagle on December 29th. And if you got the last issue of the Doylestown Township newsletter, Owen's project is featured on page two, and it's that beautiful, what is it called? It's a beehive. It's an amazing little structure, and it's, and it's just a very talented young man. Anyway, motion to approve the proclamation for Eagle Scout.
I'll move to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Neal. All right, next item on the agenda is the YMCA Development Agreement.
YMCA previously received approval to get with their next phase of their improvements. Offer for your approval is the proposed development agreement reflecting that additional phase. They posted the money, signed the agreement, provided the insurance certificate, so state have recommended the board approve the development agreement for this phase of the YMCA.
Okay, everyone had the opportunity to review this development agreement. We've seen them before, it's pretty standard. Is there a motion to approve the development agreement?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I'm remembering to talk in. Next item is the fire company yearly stipends. Members of the fire brigades that live in Doylestown Township get a $500 a year stipend, and we have a list of who they are. Do we know how many in total that we will stipend?
It's probably about 13,000, 14,000, that was what they...
The total amount?
Total amount, and they have to meet the requirement hours. Also, Shellfont has provided you with the one person from Shellfont, and Warrington had no one who met the hours, so they have not made a request.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this yearly stipend allocation, as detailed by the manager?
I'll make that motion to approve, and, and thanks for the amount of our residents that, that do this type of work.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a new appointment resignation, a new appointment, well, he already resigned. We have a new appointment to the Pension Advisory Committee. Officer Malinski will replace Officer Rio. Is there a motion to approve him?
Move to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. It's really hard to see these lights. I'm struggling here. What happens is, because the light is coming from this way, there's a shadow falling over my agenda, so I have to keep moving it, and then I can't speak correctly into the microphone. That's why I'm struggling here.
So you have a shadow agenda?
I have a shadow agenda.
Is that what that is?
Shadow on the agenda.
Wanted to clarify that.
A shadow agenda here, yes. Request for expansion of public water to Pebble Ridge and Woodridge area. There's a memo from Ken to, from Keith to us.
Keith House's Executive Director for the Authority is going to explain to the Board the proposal from the DTMA on expanding the public water system in the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge area.
Yes, thank you. Good to be back. So, we are, we, we've been working with Toll Brothers and their engineering department for the last year or so to bring public water to the proposed Doylestown Walk. That is highlighted in the green water main that, that you'll see. We will be extending our system from roughly Brinker Drive down Lower State Road and then feeding that development. As part of the decision, decision for us was to strengthen and provide some additional redundancy in our system, we looked at ways where we could loop that water main to provide them with adequate service. So you'll remember, we did a lot of work in the last few years. We sent out surveys to basically every street in Pebble Ridge and Woodridge. The streets that came back with the most favorable request were Westaway Lane and Stony Lane Circle. It just so happens that Westaway Lane is a very important transmission route for this proposed water main. So it made perfect sense for us and our board to recommend a water main extension down Westaway Lane, head, I guess, Western Old New Road, and then tie into that, that new water main that'll be feeding Doylestown Walk. In addition, the board, we, we knew that we had an issue with a dead-end main along Willow Lane several years ago. Willow Lane was, had water main installed up to a portion of, of Willow. We are now going to extend Willow all the way out to Westaway Lane to eliminate a dead end. And as I mentioned, the third street would be the, the water main following down Old New Road. Now, it's important to note, this is different than the sewer project. This is a completely voluntary process for the homeowners to choose whether they wish to connect or not. We, we've worked out some preliminary costs, which are, which are there in the memo, and we, we've actually received agreements, signed agreements that were sent out back, I think, this past summer. And we have over a 50% participation rate, which is, which is very good, and we probably will, once the water main is installed, we hope to actually get a little higher rate. So DTMA Board is excited about extending the opportunity to additional residents in, in the township. We will follow the sewer project, we will not be in the way, we'll work with Dave with road restoration and make sure we're not holding anything up. So I'm just here looking for some concurrence with the project and, and to, to allow us to move forward here.
The operating agreement that exists between the township and a municipal authority, you're not of authority to direct them, but major projects require your consent.
I'm okay.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and, and, and just to, I mean, DTMA's been working on this for over a year now, and this, this is significant.
Yes.
Really is a big, significant step for DTMA, for our residents to get good, clean drinking water. And I am absolutely positive that as soon as that pipe gets in the ground, we're going to get a lot more residents, just like we're getting with the sewer project. As soon as the pipe goes past our house, we've got residents hooking up, and I think that's going to be the same. So kudos to Keith and the DTMA.
Thank you, that, that would be great, that would be great.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the DTMA proposals here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Warwick Township, Warwick Township 2019 Comprehensive Plan update, it's for our information only, we don't need to do anything with it.
No, we need to send a letter, the Planning Committee, our Planning Commission reviewed the plan. They found no substantial impact on our border, and they would unanimously recommend to the Board to support the plan and Warwick's efforts, and to further recommend the township work with Warwick on joint projects such as trails on the Nishamani Greenway.
Okay, so they need a letter?
We need a letter.
Okay, so, so be it.
Send a letter?
Leave my one.
Make it happen, right?
Thank you, Stephanie, all right. Similarly, the Warrington Township Act 537 special study, I realize that involves some of our residents, a few of them. What other, what else do we need to do with this study?
They're looking for our letter of support that we are okay with their proposed change. They are selling their sewer system to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority.
They did already.
They did, okay. So did we miss our opportunity because of the, our meeting schedules to comment, or, or just then it's for information for the board that we, some of our residents will be impacted and will no longer be served by Warrington, but will be served by Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority on Turk Road and down by the Holbert, or the Old Holberts.
I would advise it, it was sold last week.
Mm-hmm.
So I think maybe just the notice to our residents who are served, who will change, there will be a change affecting them. They probably already know, but I think that's the best we can do at this point, right? Best we can do at this point. I'm getting a hairy eyeball every time I don't talk right. All right, next item is the Act 537 update.
This is from our Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board, has been reviewing the work with Carol Engineering. For our 537 update, the Board will recall, it's been close to 20 years since we've updated our plan, and we've had a lot of amendments and changes. And we're in this process. They have provided us with information on, along with a map as to the areas that could be served, and so in order to do the appropriate planning, the mapping that they've provided, although you would think it would be parts of future phases, say two and three that they're referring to, the committee reviewed everything, they took several months to look at it and make sure it was appropriate, and you have my memo along with the map that shows that the gray area indicated on the map in Phase Three, that to include the light green area on the attached map in Phase Two, and to include the purple area on the attached map in Three, and that the proposal would include trench restoration only as part of the project. And that was reviewed and recommended by our Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board on, at their meeting October 24th. So we need to communicate back to Carol Engineering so that they can continue to study the plan overall and in, and build the, you know, the report and the 537 plan showing that in the, in the system at this point in time.
The plan, once it's submitted, will be required to have public hearings and subsequent board approval, so you're just asking them to do a draft of a plan?
Right, and how it would be laid out with these, these areas versus, as you can see on the map, the Phase Three and the Phase Two.
Okay, does it need board approval, or is it just that out of the way, go ahead?
No, I think it requires board approval.
All right, is there a motion to, Rick, do you want to make this motion, as you're closely aligned to sewers and septic and stuff?
Yeah, I'm very closely aligned to sewers and freshwater. Yeah, I'll make that motion through the...
Carol Engineering.
Carol Engineering module.
Yeah, thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Stephanie. Request to hook up from 154 Ashway. Is there a motion to approve that? Hook up for 154 Ashway?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, I'm going to take that as a motion.
It's a motion, yes.
Take that as a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, those poor people. All right, the next item is Callan Subdivision Sewer Planning Module. This requires board approval?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I make the motion to approve Callan Subdivision Sewer Planning Module.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then there's a resolution for the Doylestown Walk as well.
I'll make the motion for Doylestown Walk as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I think we're through the meat and potatoes. Oh, there's one other thing. I need, we're trying to consolidate all the various leases we have on Turk Park, one, two, and three, and the license we have with the county on the Dog Park. We're trying to consolidate, we have three different leases, three different timeframes and a, and a license. So we're trying to consolidate all those three things into one document, one lease contract, and that's in the works. I hope to have it done really soon. We want to get it to the county as soon as possible, and, because they have to execute the document. So I'm looking for authority from the board that once the, the consolidated leases occur and that I've got something to see, that I be authorized to execute it. I'm getting it from Mr. Garten.
Do you need a motion for that?
I do, I do. No, just so, by way of background, I'm familiar with every single one of these leases over the years. In fact, I probably helped craft a couple of them myself. So I know what's in them, and I know what has to be in this one, so I just wanted you to know that.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, everyone's okay with that? I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that just cuts out some time. But I will report back once it's completed, you'll see a copy of it, and we'll have it. All right, I'm gonna, it's late, I'm just going to say, go online and buy all the gift given idea, gift giving ideas right here. Oh, I got a treasures report, thank you. I, I'm not done yet. Treasures report from November 19, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then approval for the bills list for November 19, 2019.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're done. So gift giving ideas, tickets, parking wreck, gift certificates, park benches, mural print, dogs around Doylestown, bricks at Kids Castle, bricks at the Service Memorial, a township bicentennial Mercer tiles. When is Kids Castle going to open? I'm tired, and people ask me every day.
Dave, Kids Castle will open this weekend.
Yes, it will.
Officially, like people can go there this week?
People will be able to go there, yes, this weekend.
Okay, just in time for Thanksgiving, Kids Castle will open this weekend. Woohoo! Hey, all right, official. So put that out there on our sites and everything, it's been a long time coming. Thank you, Dave, and the Kids... Thank you, Dave, and the Kids Castle Committee of One and a Half, and Ryan.
Two.
Two now?
We have, oh no, we have three members.
Okay. And Ryan, thank you for getting that done, and everybody else involved. All right, we're done.
Thanksgiving, everybody. You too, Ed.
Yes, yes, Ed, happy Thanksgiving.
Documents to be signed.
Documents checked.
To make sure everybody knows.
Thank you.